Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Tracy Frederick, Director of Engagement and Strategy for the Kansas School Board Resource Center, and welcome to the first session in the School Board Training Academy. Tonight, we will take a deep dive into the eight things to know about running for school board. We begin this academy with Melanie Sturm, author of Chapter Five in your book, Communicating Using the Six Powers of Persuasion. Hopefully, you've all read Melanie's impressive biography. She's the founder of Engage to Win and the Win Coach, coaching elected officials, candidates, corporate executives, policy analysts, and advocates, students, and nonprofit and movement leaders. Melanie's goal is tonight is to introduce you to her Six Powers of Persuasion and have built an audience participation opportunities. But given the time constraints, it's obvious we may not be possible, it may not be possible, everyone to interact, but there will be opportunities for you to interact. Melanie wants you to be able to answer some of the questions that you have. You probably noticed that this is a little different from our webinars. You can be seen and you can be heard. So if you will make sure that we can see you as you interact, Melanie would like to be able to see her face, know who she's talking to, and for us to be able to know who we're interacting with. But if at some point you have some background noise, please mute your microphone if you don't mind. That will allow us to not disturb Melanie's presentations or other conversations that are going on with the question-answer portion. So when Melanie asks a question, she'll take the first person who speaks up. And I don't want to waste any more of the time. Want to move everything that we can to Melanie so she has all the opportunity to share her wisdom with us. So I will turn it over to Melanie.
Well, thank you, Tracy, not just for the introduction, but for all the collaboration and helping make this possible to be able to reach people literally from across several states. And so I'm just delighted to be able to present this to everyone tonight. And I want to thank Dave since he's on the Zoom here, not just for also arranging this, but for planting the seed last summer that I might contribute to this book. Because in the process, you know, Mark Twain said, "If I had more time, I could have written something shorter." And so I took the time to put the thoughts and the workshops that I do generally have in person and usually, you know, half-day, full-day workshops, and to condense it into this one chapter that I contributed to this fantastic book with so much information. And so I want to thank Dave for inviting me to contribute and then to present again tonight. And so my goal tonight, as Tracy said, is to teach you how to message your winning ideas persuasively so that you can bring people to the ideas that are student-focused, that are going to help them achieve what they need academically so they can go on to flourish in their lives. And so persuasion, I learned myself in writing an opinion column, is different than opinion. Opinion, you are literally telling people things that they don't already know, or you are presenting facts and arguments with which they might not be familiar. But persuasion, and I learned this in writing my column, Think Again, You Might Change Your Mind, I learned the difference between opinion and persuasion. Because persuasion is actually tapping in to what people already believe. You're tapping into their instincts. And so, once you've done, and you've done it in a way that resonates for them, you're using words and you're tapping into their values that are already in their head in such a way that they're willing, you've earned their trust, and therefore, they're willing to join you on this journey to the common ground they instinctively share. They just didn't know it until you brought them there. And so I will tell you, just the bio doesn't tell the story of how a finance, someone with a finance background like me came to be teaching this workshop. But suffice it to say, I started writing this column in 2011 in the Aspen Times, having worked with, making point-counterpoints on the editorial page of the Aspen Times the summer of 2010, in these point-counterpoints. And about six months later, the editor of the Aspen Times asked if I would help him diversify the opinion page. And I always joke, it's not because he needed a woman or a Jew. And I told him I didn't want to just parrot talking points. And so I wanted to write something thoughtful to expose people to unconsidered facts and arguments. So I called it Think Again, You Might Change Your Mind. The idea being that in order to have a free and fair society, we have to have an informed and thoughtful citizenry, and that's all I was trying to do. And in the process of trying to make myself readable, you know, I didn't want to be the scourge of a place like Aspen where I live by just parroting these, you know, sort of Republican talking points. I sought out the masters of communication, including Dale Carnegie, Stephen Covey, Simon Sinek, and others, to make myself as hearable as possible. And in the process, I started to realize, not only was I readable, I was the most popular columnist on the Aspen Times, and then people were not finding me to be ideological. And so I started to keep track of the things that I was doing, and that became my Six Powers of Persuasion. So if you are in this workshop with me now, you got my email and the attachments in that email, including the Six Powers of Persuasion. And then the four other attachments I'll be mentioning, but not going into very much since we have limited time. But there's a trust, 55 Ways to Build Trust, so people will join you on this journey to the common ground they instinctively share. And then I have another handout I actually just developed on how to have productive conflict. Because I know that David told me that some of the issues that you have on school boards, those of you who are on school boards now, is how to speak with people who disagree, whether they're in the administration or fellow school board members. And the truth is that productive conflict, it's not easy to do, but you can do it well. And in the process, not only can you get to resolutions that are clarifying and inclusive of a variety of different points of view, but you do it in a very respectful way. And this is how you build that kind of reputation for being informed and thoughtful. And so there's that handout, and then the two handouts I'll be referring to. And this should be, I always like, I tell people, I, as I think it's said, "Better to teach people to fish than just give them the fish." Well, this workshop is only two hours. I'll do my best to teach you how to be persuasive. But hopefully, these handouts are the fish, so to speak, that you can take away to cement the concepts that I'm going to be talking about tonight. And so really, persuasion is one of the things before I get going here is just think about this. Persuasion is really the art of letting other people get your way. And they follow you because you earn their trust. And how do we do that? Well, I love this definition of Blaise Pascal. He was a French Enlightenment philosopher. And this, to me, really frames exactly what this workshop is about. He said that people are generally better persuaded by the reasons which they have themselves discovered than by those which have come into their mind from others. I think this is the better translation from French. In other words, when you can tap into what people already believe, you're likely going to say something that resonates for them. They'll nod their head. Or if you watched any of the Bill Maher videos that I put in my preparatory email, when people laugh in his audience, they're laughing because something struck a chord. And so that's another reason why, even though I love, love, and my son grew up on his videos, Ben Shapiro, he said, "Facts don't care about your feelings." And what I encourage you to consider is that really, until you have engaged someone's feelings, you do not have the credibility to share facts. So that's because feelings don't care about facts. And that's what we're going to be talking about, are ways that we can earn the trust so that we can go on and share the facts. And I often tell people, if you can remember nothing else from this presentation, remember this. People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And that's because persuasion is about saying things that resonate. It's not what you say, but what people hear you say. And you really only have as little as seven seconds to make a good first impression. So we really want to be sure that we're coming across as caring. And the other thing is the debating, and this is very much Stephen Covey. Debating is for the best talker. Persuasion is for the best listener. So the goal in making ourselves trusted, so that we have the credibility to share facts and arguments that are not already in someone's head, is to make ourselves as likable and thoughtful and to show that we're interested in them by validating their concerns. And so Stephen Covey said, "Most people do not listen with the intent to understand. Instead, they listen with the intent to reply." So they're literally thinking of what they want to say while someone else is talking. I'm sure all of you have been in situations like this. And so we need to flip that script to earn their trust so that we can lead them to this common ground they instinctively share. And we're going to be talking about that. And so our challenge really, in doing what Stephen Covey advises, is to reverse this damaging stereotype that not only are we uncaring, but we are bigoted extremists. We want to commit trans genocide and deport Hispanic grandmas and burn up the planet out of greed, all that stuff. That's our challenge. And, you know, this is a meme I took off of Facebook a few years ago. "Why listen to conservatives who are against the things you're for?" Says this young male millennial. Although I have to say, I've been watching the polling recently. It shows that my son, who's 21, he's in the demographic that is turning to the right, interestingly. But there are a lot of young, still a lot of young people who think, well, why should I listen to a conservative if they're against the things I'm for? And I'm not even going to read this list, but suffice it to say that it's not just what we're for, it's how we talk about what we're for that causes people to think these things about us. And I'm going to be showing you examples of that. So what this workshop is about is, I don't, there's too many people on here for me to even see you. But I don't know if there are people who even know the movie Cool Hand Lu, because it's an old film. But there is a famous line from that film called, what we've got, the line is, "What we've got here is failure to communicate." And that's what this workshop is designed to address. And that's where the Six Powers of Persuasion come in. The, that handout that was first in your, in the email that I sent you. And so Dennis Prager says that "The secret to good pedagogy is repetition." You're going to see this over and over. We're going to be going over this a lot, these Six Powers of Persuasion. But the first is this idea that you are the message, that we have as little as seven seconds to make a good first impression, that you can incline people to like or dislike you. So use your nonverbal cues, communication cues, to make them like you. And then the whole goal is really about finding the common ground, doing it by fighting for people and using fairness and compassion appeals because social science reveals that that's naturally something that will resonate with most people from across the political spectrum. And we're going to be talking about this. You might have had a chance to watch the video of the interview of Jonathan Haidt, in which he explains the moral foundation theory, but that when we speak to people's sense of fairness and compassion, we are hitting that intersection in the Venn diagram, hitting that sweet spot where we can reach everyone, all but hostiles, I often say. And then we can undergird our arguments by telling stories that are memorable and relatable. So and then, and then if you're not on, if somehow you get off of common ground and you're talking about something or someone asks you a difficult question, how do you pivot back to common ground? And so that's power persuasion number six. There are various ways to do that. Always saying, "I worry," or expressing some kind of emotion generally forces you to identify the people who you are worried about. And then what follows will generally be why you're worried about them. And that will generally be an argument that is framed in fairness and compassion. So when I do debate prep for candidates, I often say, "If you can't think of anything else, just start by saying, 'I worry,' and that'll lead you to something that will likely be persuasive." When you say "imagine," imagine transports you from, transports someone from where they are to where you want them to be. And then the importance of rhetorical questions, as I put this in the preparatory email, I couldn't emphasize that enough as a way, number one, to find common ground in the first place. And then if you're not on it, get back to it. And I'll be showing several examples. So with this, you know, brief presentation of the Six Powers of Persuasion, I want to show you a video of a candidate who ran for governor in 2022. You let me, in Pennsylvania. He was the GOP candidate, did not win. And I want you to listen how he talks.
On day one, CRT is over. On day one, no more gender pronoun games. This is all 17th January. On day one, reaffirming Toronto rights. And I even have to say that. I kind of choke on it in America. Really? No kidding. We're spending $31 billion a year in Pennsylvania on education. According to a 2020 report from the National Education Association, we're the 12th highest in the nation, spending-wise, with 28th in quality student before COVID. We're not getting our bang for the buck. And so my goal is actually to do education rather than indoctrination, and history, civics, and constitution to be brought back. My body, my choice is ridiculous nonsense. I don't give away for exceptions either. When the right to life is restored in Pennsylvania, United States, we'll look back on as slave owners in a similar fashion.
Is global warming real?
It is not. It's fake science, and it's a racket at the academic level.
Should gay marriage be legal?
Absolutely not. I'm for traditional marriage, and I am not a hater for saying that.
Should LGBTQ couples, i.e. two moms or two dads, be allowed to adopt?
No.
So does anyone want to volunteer to speak up? I can only take one person. And just tell me what you think. Was he persuasive based on the Six Powers of Persuasion? Is he fighting for people or for things? Fighting against people, fighting against things? Anyone want to volunteer to speak? I don't have a whole lot of time to... Okay, Nancy, please speak. Turn on your, turn on your...
Totally. It was all about him. I didn't feel he was talking to anybody who would have been listening to him. And it was like black and white, so there was no, no express, you know, attempt to kind of get to common ground, something where he could relate.
So he was literally fighting against things, you know? On day one, this is going to stop and that's going to stop, right? And he never mentioned how those things against which he's fighting actually hurt people, which is why he wants to get rid of them. So, okay, don't want to spend much time on the bad. That was an example of not good messaging. But so, you know, one of the things that I learned in writing my column is I figured, I got the winning ideas. I'm a good writer. I'm gonna, you know, Margaret Thatcher was right. First, you win the argument, then you win the vote. And what I realized is that in order to get people to listen to you in the first place, or read you in the first place, you have to be hearable or readable to them. And the way you do that is by earning trust. And Simon Sinek said, "A team is not a group of people that work together. A team is a group of people that trust each other." And so, you know, you can have different opinions, which is why productive conflict helps you bridge the gap between the opinions, earning someone's trust so that you can arrive at consensus resolutions that include different points of view and that make people feel heard. It's about, it's really the difference between dialogue and debate. And I encourage you to, you know, we don't have time to go through this, but this new handout, I'm proud of this. I condensed it into one handout, How to Have Productive Conflict. So let's just talk a little bit about what persuasion is. The truth is, we all have a proverbial bullhorn in our voice. And the question is, to what extent will our voice reach the maximum number of people with the maximum effect? And that's a function of our credibility and trustworthiness, which earns us credibility. And if you think trust is not a factor, look at how doctors and dentists were used to sell cigarettes back in the 50s and 60s. And then on the right here, this was an issue. I'm going to tell a story, my own story, as a case study to put this all together shortly, but having to do with the use of pronouns at a theater where I was on the board. But this was brought up at that meeting, that pediatrician groups actually have reaffirmed support for gender-affirming care. And it's tough to fight against, you know, a doctor when you're not one. And so the, I want to just take a moment to talk about the social science behind belief formations. Because one of the things I find is that conservatives, they know what they believe, and they just think all they need to do is tell people what they believe. And that, because the facts are on our side, and we have the winning arguments, like Margaret Thatcher said, that people will change. And that's just not the way it is. And the reason is that, and I'm going to use Jonathan Haidt's metaphor of the writer and the elephant to make these points. So he posited that one side of the brain is like the writer. So it's the verbal rational logical thinking brain. And then the other side is like the elephant. It's the emotional reactive visceral brain. And so if the writer wants to turn to the right, the writer can't go to the right unless the elephant wants to go to the right. So in order to appeal to the elephant, we have to poke, you know, the emotional brain. And so, you know, what happens often with conservatives is you all, you think, well, and I'm sure this has happened to you, someone comes up to you with a point of view that you disagree with. And if they don't do it in a persuasive way, it causes the backfire effect. And that's because of this concept called belief in belief and confirmation bias and motivated reasoning. We all have it. We all do it. And so the truth is, and this is the second part of what I want to share with you, the truth is, we all form our beliefs based on whether or not those beliefs make us look good and feel good. And we believe that our ideas are the best for students and that are going to help them advance. And their ideas actually hurt students. And we have proof. We have facts. We can show that. But too often, when we just present the facts, it causes the backfire effect. So the only way that we can really get people to change their beliefs is to poke their elephant by showing them that their beliefs actually hurt the very people they most want to help. And so that's the key, and we're going to be talking a lot about that. But here's an example of a guy in 21, when he was running for governor in Virginia, who literally poked the elephant of his own voters who decided to vote for the other guy. And he did that by fighting against them. The parents of kids in these Northern Virginia school districts voted, did not vote for McAuliffe because he said, "I don't think parents should be telling schools what they should teach." And so...
And I'm not going to let parents...
So then this guy, his opponent, Glenn Youngkin, he won them over by talking about this.
It is a movement where we are all standing up for our children, for our grandchildren, for our nieces, for our nephews. We're actually standing up and saying, "We have a fundamental right to be engaged in our kids' education. We have a fundamental right, we do, because parents matter. We have a fundamental right to make decisions about our law as opposed to have a big government making them all."
I don't like that last part, "big government making..." We all have a right. It was, you can see here, what McAuliffe is doing is, and remember, the winning side always fights for people, not for or against things, and definitely not against people. Well, McAuliffe is fighting against people, parents, of all people. And Youngkin is not just fighting for parents, he's fighting for everyone, our nieces and nephews, everyone. And we all have the right, a fundamental right to be engaged in our kids' education. This is actually getting decided, or will be decided, before the Supreme Court again, or actually finally getting before the Supreme Court, the Maryland case that you probably all heard of. And so back to the Six Powers of Persuasion. Again, hopefully, you're getting a sense for the fact that when you fight for people, you're coming across as fair and compassionate. And that helps, whatever you're saying is going to naturally resonate, you know, with the person that you're trying to persuade. And so our goal with our messaging, with this common ground messaging, that I call it common ground messaging, is to appeal to persuadables. You know, the truth is, most people are not as engaged or even well-informed as we are. I call them persuadables, and they're there for the taking if we say things that resonate well with them. So the goal is to appeal to persuadables while neutralizing what I call hostiles and then holding on and uniting of the friendlies. And so I always tell people, I wrote this in the preparatory email, that the truth is, hostiles are not convertible. And if you're running in a campaign, you know, to be on a school board, your opponent is by definition a hostile. You're not going to convert them. But, so I always say, "Don't engage a hostile," because it's not worth your time, unless you're in the presence of persuadables, which you are when you're in a campaign. Or if you're on a school board, there are going to be people of all types around you. And if you engage a persuadable using the Six Powers of Persuasion, then they will be drawn to you and your likability and thoughtfulness and repelled by the hostility of the hostile. And that's really the goal. And then in the process, also holding on to friendlies. I did an in-person workshop in Texas where there were actually conservatives that were against school choice, you know? So they're friendlies. So it was tough messaging that. I'm not going to go into that now because they've changed their, they actually passed a law in Texas, a school choice law, thankfully. So here's Arthur Brooks, one of my first, I have another workshop I do on just conservative issues. And that, one of my first conservative persuasion workshops, Arthur Brooks, who was at the time the president of American Enterprise Institute. He spoke at it, and I have a couple excerpts from him. And he's the one who actually introduced me to Jonathan Haidt and moral foundation theory. But here, I want you to watch this.
We need, we don't need a fundamental change in values. We're contrary, our values are correct. Our worldview is right, but we need to talk differently. We have to talk in a way that shows that we are willing to fight for people more than the other guys. Until we do that, we're not going to succeed in our message, and people are simply not going to be drawn to us. That's what I hope to, that's what I hope to share with you today. How long does it take people to figure you out? Somebody doesn't know you. You're in a debate. You're giving a speech. You're having a conversation, whatever. How long does it take people to figure out you? The answer is seven seconds. People will assess who you are and what your message is all about. They'll sum you up. They'll put you in a frame in seven seconds. What are you going to do? The answer is, if you want to win, you better be in charge of your seven seconds.
By coming across as caring. And so the truth is, sorry, I went to, I dashed to the kitchen to get a bottle of water, and now I'm out of breath. That's what you get for living at altitude. So unfortunately, we're living in a moment of extreme partisanship, partisan, partisanship, yeah, in which people live in these echo chambers, these thought silos, where they are fed by what I call curated tribalism. And so they will only follow those who confirm their bias and unfriend those who don't. And so we lose this moral consensus, which really... And so we lose this moral consensus, which really binds us in America. When we speak in ways that resonate across the spectrum, we can really pull people together. And so the, the challenge, because politics is a game of addition, is to learn to meet people. If you're in this uh, thought silo, you've got to learn how to speak, meet people where they are in the other one and pull people over by using the kind of language that um, invites them to consider your point of view, because you've earned their trust. And um, this is a quote of Tom Sowell, he's one of my absolute favorites, who, when I was writing my column in the Aspen Times, and by the way, I've moved over to Substack. If you're not familiar with Substack, it's a good platform where lots of really good writers are, are writing now. And um, so I call it Think Again, You Might Change Your Mind, you can find me on Substack, free subscription, although Substack does push you to try to do uh, uh, to, to offer services uh, for people who are paid subscribers, but that, but anyway, you're, you're welcome to subscribe to my Substack, um, having it written about education, but I plan to. Anyway, um, the uh, the, this quote of Tom Sowell, when I was writing my column and I saw this, I'm like, this is exactly what I was doing in my column. I was steering clear of the words and the phrases and the uh, the personalities that would cause the hair on people's neck to go up so they would shut down and not read me or listen to me. That was one thing I was doing. And the other thing I was doing, just instinctively, was I was sticking to issues and I was showing how the issues with which I disagreed hurt people and are unfair and uncompassionate. And then I read this um, quote of Tom Sowell, he said, the strongest argument for socialism is that it sounds good. And I would say, it's not just socialism, it's any bad statist idea, governmentally intrusive idea. Yeah, they all sound good. And the strongest argument against those ideas is that they don't work. And that's what I was instinctively doing in my column, is taking on the bad ideas and showing how they hurt people and were unfair and uncompassionate and how the good ideas helped people and were fair and compassionate. And so um, you know, I would love to be able to make this a little more interactive at this point, but I guess, and uh, by the way, I, I, I forgot to mention that this uh, if you have any, I ca- I can't share my uh, presentation. Uh, this PowerPoint is massive, but take screenshots. So um, does anyone want to, uh, volunteer to take any one of these issues? And explain how, like, take one of the ones that, of the policies that are bad on the left and explain how they are hurtful to people and unfair and uncompassionate. Does anyone want to take, let's try um, hopefully, gender-neutral bathrooms is something that someone could speak to uh, easily at this point? Anyone want to try that? We don't have a whole lot of time to, just anyone?
I'll go.
Okay, good. Who's hurt by, who's hurt by gender-neutral bathrooms and why is that unfair and uncompassionate?
Um, it's honestly, I was gonna kind of steer to the sports too, because gender-neutral bathrooms is also an issue with the locker rooms.
That's good.
Um, and so I, how this policy affects or may not be fair or helpful to people. Um, it's pretty much going back to that, that I, you know, the, the group of individuals that are all about um, supporting the LGBTQ um, platform. So um, the fact that they're not looking at the equality, but they're looking at more of equity.
Okay, so you're explaining it, but if you were to say, I worry, try, try to say, I worry about, what do you worry about regarding?
I worry about having our female students being safe in their own body and in their own area. Cause I have a daughter, I want to make sure that, you know, that she's safe as well. And so my concern is, is that um, I think in order for us to uh, eliminate having this mixed bathrooms and locker rooms, we need to make sure we establish um, a fairness with throughout, just not just men, but for females.
Okay, well, you went off on fighting against something there, but in the beginning you were great. I got you to do it by saying, I worry. Cause you see how I worry forces you to say who you worry about and why you worry and you want your daughter and her friends and all girls and women for that matter, to feel safe in their private spaces. Excellent. Okay, we could, we could spend the whole workshop on this, uh, one slide. So here's the common ground messaging that I uh, teach in the education area. So the framing um, based on the six powers of persuasion is, you know, please take a screenshot. And by the way, this is all in your handout. Or they're not this, they're sprinkled throughout your handouts. But the, the persuasive messaging frame is, we have an obligation to students. And then also conservatives always want to talk about taxpayers. So we can throw them in and the taxpayers who fund their education to get back to basics, so our kids are academically prepared to flourish in their lives, find jobs in the 21st century workforce and participate in our democracy. And because questions are often ways to get back to common ground, you could say, don't we have an obligation to students to get back to basics so that they can flourish in their lives? That's another, you can see how that works when you take a declarative statement and turn it into a question. And so here is just um, several of the um, arguments that are what I call wise and they're on your handout. Wise, put another's beliefs into words and therefore they will naturally resonate. So if you were, let, for, let's take this, uh, the second one. The most precious resource in education is a student's attention span. Um, usually I say, it's not, I usually say, most people think that um, the most precious resource in education is money or teacher's time. But if you think about it, it's really the attention span of a student. And so why as schools would we squander that attention span by teaching kids controversial ideas that differ from their own beliefs or their family's beliefs and it could cause confusion and anxiety? Why would we want to do that? Um, and so when you ask it as a question, you're literally pulling out of someone's head what they think, they're going to likely agree with you. There are, either they will have to defend that they disagree with you, which is tough, or they will come to the conclusion in, on their own, that they agree with you, which is the definition of persuasion. Um, so um, and again, it's this idea, people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. So when you're fighting for people and using this fairness and compassion frame, you are coming across as caring. Now here is the um, social science behind that, Jonathan Haidt's Righteous Mind, the book that he wrote. And this is a slide from Arthur Brooks's presentation. And then I put it in, in the chapter and in um, Dave's book is um, about the five moral foundations, the, the prisms through which people look at the world or society or policy. And you could actually go on Jonathan Haidt's website called yourmorals.org and see how um, you rate on that spectrum. Um, but the punchline, i- i- the punchline is that liberals are off the charts in terms of caring about compassion and fairness and conservatives care about all five about the same. And uh, I go into the detail of what they are in the book. Uh, but suffice it to say, it's only conservatives that care um, with regard to purity, that say Miley Cyrus was twerking. Um, or authority has to do with uh, like um, and liberals didn't care about, about that. Um, conservatives are annoyed by sanctuary cities not enforcing laws. Uh, little kids coming over the border, not so much. Um, uh, I'm, I actually, I'm noticing there are people putting things in the chat. So I can't present and look in the chat, but I will when we play a video, just so you know that. Um, so a back to, so it's only conservatives that care about purity, authority and also loyalty. Conservatives are annoyed when Colin Kaepernick didn't stand for the national anthem, not so much liberals. Um, and uh, so then you'll see here, money is not in the Venn diagram. Uh, and yet conservatives tend to talk a lot about money. This is a non-education example, but um, conservatives, we're gonna hear this soon with the beautiful uh, bill that hopefully gets passed and signed by the president of the reconciliation bill, um, gonna be talking about Medicaid. Um, but oh, conservatives often rail against unsustainable entitlements instead of saying something like, it's unfair that young people paying into the system now won't get their benefits when they retire. That is a money argument framed in terms of fairness and compassion and fighting for the vulnerable who are getting hurt by not reforming Medicaid. Or in the case of uh, education budgets, like, why would we spend, and this is something that Dave does a great job of in the book, of why do we spend so much money on administration and on um, school activities that are not advancing students' interests? Um, that, you know, that you're, you're, so you ask it as a question, you make people defend why you would do that. It's a tough thing to defend. Uh, so um, and here's Arthur Brooks explaining this in a little more detail.
Everybody understands that hurting poor people is wrong. That's the basic principle, moral principle of compassion toward the weak. Number two is fairness. Conservatives hate fairness. Saint Milton Friedman said, don't never talk about fairness, because it's a subjectively defined concept. Milton Friedman was a genius and I'm not, but that's not good advice. Why? Because John Haidt shows us that 100% of the population cares about fairness. We are wired to care about fair play, fairness. You want to make the moral case? You better do it, because you're fighting for people and you better fight for people or you're gonna waste your seven seconds. The two things you gotta talk about are compassion for the vulnerable and fairness for all. Those are the two.
But what is the state of US education? Um, and then I want to show you and give you confidence that we are, um, we have a lot of voter support for the kind of reforms we seek. So again, the role of education is, as I said before, we have an obligation to students and taxpayers to educate our children so they are academically prepared to flourish in their lives, participate in our democracy, um, compete for jobs in the 21st century workforce, et cetera. This other one here is about um, kind of co-opting the language of the left. We want our schools to be safe zones in which students are assured physical and intellectual security to identify first and foremost as learners. Whether readers, thinkers, and you could even ask it as a question, isn't it our duty as school board members or education advocates to assure that our kids, when they're at school, um, are taught to identify first and foremost as learners? Whether readers, thinkers, writers, math problem solvers, et cetera. Um, and so here's the state of, and this is well documented in the book. But uh, as you know, reading and math scores have plummeted during the pandemic, hurting most um, uh, America's poor. Um, and this is uh, uh, poor national test scores, uh, um, yeah, hurting America's poor, what's going on here? Okay, then this is just an article from last week. Um, our math and reading score is increasing and so the results are in, 31% of fourth graders and only 30% of eighth graders are proficient in reading. And so I'm sure you're well aware of this stuff, I'll go through these charts fast. So you, look how fourth grade reading scores have dropped between 2017 and 24. Um, probably a lot because of the pandemic, but probably a lot because of focusing on non-academic issues. Um, and we can make that, and need to make that argument, eighth grade reading scores dropped nine points. And then the gap, this is a point that Dave makes well in the book, is the gap between the highest and lowest performers in eighth grade math grew in 24. But it's really everything, as you can see here. So you can see here, math scores for eighth graders on the left. The top scores are actually improving. While those who are uh, poorer and don't perform as well, they're actually going down faster. So the gap is growing for both math in eighth grade and reading uh, for fourth grade. And this is a, this is a chart that shows eighth grade math scores have declined in all states but Tennessee since 2019. And by the way, this is all just like last week's news, this is based on the uh, NAEP, the new NAEP figures. This is, uh, you probably know ACT scores have slid to 30-year lows across all subjects. Uh, this is actually Kansas, I know a lot of you guys are from Kansas. This is based, this is from um, Dave's article from 23, race-based and income-based achievement gaps have widened in Kansas. Um, and here, this is um, since 2020, um, uh, until the fall of 22, that's what this chart is, that administrative staff in K-312 has exploded by 95%. Principal uh, expenditures on principals uh, has gone up about 39%. Teachers has gone up 10%, while the number of students has only gone up 5%. And this is from um, the Digest of Education Statistics. And it comes from this guy, uh, Corey DeAngelis is his name, you can see here his Twitter handle. He's someone very much worth following, um, comes up with, he's a, a great education advocate, if you don't know him already. Uh, so, alright, so we're back to the six powers of persuasion and we're gonna go fast through each one of them um, with more examples. Um, and so here, I want to tell the story that I referred to earlier about my experience on the Theater Aspen Board. Um, there was a diversity committee that was put together in early 22. And I won't go into the details, but um, suffice it to say, I was um, challenged to put my persuasive uh, messaging talents to use a lot on that committee because we had to decide about what the land acknowledgement would be and there was a diversity statement we had to come up with. But the summer of 23, I didn't even know, nobody knew on the board that the Theater Aspen School, which teaches during the school year and a summer camp, had implemented a policy. And one of the mothers of one of the camp counselors, uh, a young um, uh, college sophomore who was a camp counselor, uh, she, in the summer, um, she got this hand, uh, this policy that they had implemented that on pronouns, that said, when all the kids at the beginning of camp had to introduce themselves with their name and their pronoun, and if they didn't have a pronoun, they were automatically they. And the mother sent this to me and she was outraged and I had no idea. And um, um, suffice it to say, the diversity committee that I'd been on, I felt I didn't even want to go to them. I just took it to the executive committee. I was, had been a, a prior president, so I was still on the executive committee at the time. And so I sent everyone on the executive committee an email in which I attached this policy, nobody knew it existed. And um, I said, in the email, very brief, I said, I wanted to discuss it at the, discuss it, discuss it at our next meeting. And I said, um, this is a policy, it's not without consequences. And I shared the video of a young woman, Katie Lennon is her name. And you can find it on YouTube. And she spoke in two minutes before the state legislature of New Hampshire in which she said, um, you wanted to affirm my identity. Um, and you were well-meaning and you used the name I wanted and the pronouns I wanted. And when that wasn't enough, then I went on testosterone. And when that wasn't enough, then I had a double mastectomy. And when that wasn't enough, and she talks about all the other surgeries she had, and now I'm a mutilated version of myself. And then I just asked the question, why would we ever want to plant the seed in a young child's mind that maybe they were born in the wrong body, question mark? And that was in my email that I sent out to everyone, in which I said I wanted to discuss the attached policy. Get to the meeting and um, the managing director at the time came, he oversaw the um, uh, the director of the school. And he came in loaded for bear. And when the time came to discuss this matter, he came at me with just fierce um, venom. And he um, he called me a bigot, he said, I've seen your Twitter feed. He said, I'm outraged that you would equate uh, that you, that people who have a identity that differs from something you approve of, that they have a mental condition, gender dysphoria. Um, and uh, and uh, I, I, and then he said, uh, and then he came up with all of these papers that were from like, the uh, American Medical Association, the Pediatric Society, Harvard this, Princeton that, Yale that, all saying gender-affirming care is state of the art. And when he finished, and he was just like, just, he was just- And when he finished, and he was just like, just, he was just shaking. I leaned in. And despite the fact that he was clearly attacking me, I leaned in and I said, Michael, can we just agree that we both share a desire to protect kids? We just have different ways of going about it. And so then I tried to find some common ground by saying, why, as a, as a school, couldn't we initiate a process when a parent registers their child? But there are a variety of issues that we should be considering. Maybe the parent, we should ask parents if they would share with us whether their child has any special issues. Maybe they're hearing impaired, maybe they're on the spectrum. Maybe like me, when I was younger, I had this ugly back brace. I still did theater, but kids would make fun of me, you know? But you did, my mom never dealt with it, but maybe that's something we want to offer parents the chance to inform us about and then we can come up with a plan to deal with it. And that the issue of someone's gender identity could be among the things that we deal with. So I came across as eminently reasonable and fair and that I was compassionate. I wanted to project that to the other people around the table. Trust me, not a single one was conservative. And, and then I told my story. And my story is that from the time I can remember, I always wanted to grow up and be a man. I wanted, and I played with the boys, I was very athletic, I was a tomboy. And when I hit puberty, I didn't tell my mother. And when she figured it out, she confronted me and I told her how ashamed I was. And that I just wanted to grow up and carry a briefcase and go to an office and wear a suit. And she said, you can, and I love you just the way you are. And you can do all those things and still be a woman. And she affirmed my gender non-conformity. Instead of today, we're telling kids like me who were gender non-conforming, no, you need to change your body, or you, you should consider changing your body, or gay boys for that matter. And I invoked another friend of mine who's on the board, happens to be gay, who was very much against this policy. So I came across to the persuadables around me as reasonable. And to, and he, because he was so venomous and so like mean and like going after me, attacking me, he lost a lot of credibility. And so the theater did away with this policy. The one thing I did lose on is they agreed that if a teacher wants to present themselves to the class with their name and their pronoun, that we have to respect that. That I lost that one, but anyway, I hope that little case study is helpful in showing you how to put the six powers of persuasion together. You know, and the rhetorical question of why would we ever want to plant this idea in a vulnerable child's mind? That maybe they're born in the wrong body. Shouldn't we love them just the way they are? That resonated. So here is Condoleezza Rice putting all six powers of persuasion together well as well.
So are you for school choice or not? We already have a choice system in education. If you are of means, you will move to a district where the schools are good and the houses are expensive, like Palo Alto, California. If you go across the street from Stanford, Palo Alto High has a performance arts center that looks like a smaller version of Stanford's. If you're really wealthy, you will send your kids to private schools. So who's stuck in failing neighborhood schools? Poor kids, a lot of them minority kids. So how can you say you're for civil rights? How can you say you're for the poor? When you're condemning those children to not be able to read, by the time they're in third grade, they're never going to read. So if you want to say that school choice and vouchers and charter schools are destroying the public schools, fine. You write that editorial in the Washington Post, but then don't send your kids to Sidwell Friends.
Which is a private school in Washington DC. So does anyone want to volunteer what she did that kind of adopts or reflects the six powers of persuasion? Did you catch her framing? Did you catch who she's fighting for? Anyone?
She's, she's fighting for those students who don't have that choice, who are trapped.
Right, right. And so she, and she, you know, they're in failing neighborhoods. And so she identifies those kids, the poor kids, a lot of the minority kids. And you know, you think you're for civil rights, but that these poor kids should be condemned to schools where they're not being taught to read? Really? And if you don't read by third grade, you're never going to read? And then I thought that, you know, and she, she was able to get to common ground with the question, like her use of questions, I thought was effective in the beginning. Are you for school choice or not? You know, that's like, and then she comes out and says, we already have school choice in education. If you have means, you have a choice to go where the schools are good. But if you don't have means, you don't have a choice and that's not fair. So, okay, so the first power of persuasion, we're going to go one by one now. And then I'll tie it all up at the end here in a moment with the, maybe you saw this, the Martha McCallum interview of Randy Weingarten. That was a 15-minute interview. I'm not going to show, I condensed it though. Then we're going to look at how Martha got her to basically agree on everything. But anyway, so you are the message, this idea, first power of persuasion, that 50, people don't know this, but 50 to 90% of in-person communication is actually non-verbal. So we want to be very conscious of how, what our body language is, our facial features are. And then when we start to speak, the, the tone and pace of our speaking voice. And then just be really mindful that we are trying to open our mind to considering others. This is, you know, part of this how to have productive conflict, to really truly evidence that we're interested in other people's point of view. So can you resist talking only about the points that resonate with you? And can you listen with the intent to understand, as Stephen Covey puts it? And so what we do this with our body language and what I call I hear you body language. So smiling is effective. Whenever I go to New York, I always test this out on the sidewalk. I'll smile at New Yorkers and believe it or not, they'll smile back. Because when you smile at people, you're actually causing a chemical reaction in their brain that induces them to smile back and like you. So just, just slightly more. So why not just use that? Then eye contact makes people feel like you're listening to them. They feel heard. Head nods is very affirming. People feel like you're agreeing, you're agreeing with them. And then there's a TED Talk about having open posture. People who have it are perceived as more honest. So why not use that? And then the connecting gesture here can be effective. I don't know that we have any men on this call. I can't really tell. But I always caution men to be careful not to come across too much like Bill Clinton or Joe Biden with their connecting gestures. And then obviously goes without saying, hopefully, don't use contemptuous body language. Don't roll your eyes or crush your arms or purse your lips, et cetera. All this stuff is in the handout, how to have productive conflict. And then, you know, basically it's this side, the reciprocity principle. You want to role model to others what you want to see in them. So you show an interest and you offer genuine praise. Use accurate language. Don't exaggerate or use trigger words. You want to exude the kind of positivity. Like we say, we want our kids to flourish in their lives. So that they're, we want them to be academically prepared so they can flourish in their lives. And we want to be honest and reliable. You know, don't over commit to, you know, I'm going to do something, then then not do it. That's more having to do with how to earn the credibility when you're in a team. And then using humor, never saying you're wrong, like Ben Shapiro did. And so this is the Stephen Covey, it's one of his chapters of the book, highly effective people, or the seven habits of highly effective people, seek first to understand and then be understood. And so that's, you know, the, this is kind of a summary of that handout. We're not going to go over it, but I encourage you to in more detail. And then the power of inhabiting common ground is power of persuasion number two. So we've talked about several ways to do that. And so this idea of starting with why, one of your handouts is start with why. So these are ways to, they're like conversation starters to engage persuadables and also retorts to neutralize hostiles. So like, and clarifying questions can be among them. So like with Michael, I said, can we just agree that we, you know, share a desire to protect kids? We have just different ways of going about it. That was kind of a why. And reasonable people can disagree about, let's say about the age. Reasonable people can disagree about X, but can agree about Y. So for example, reasonable people can disagree about the age at which to introduce mature concepts like gender identity and sexual orientation. But hopefully we can agree that elementary children are too young to be exposed to ideas that could cause them confusion and anxiety. That's an example of that one. We've talked about I worry and how it's going to prompt you to say who you worry about. So, oh gosh, I worry that focusing on race and gender ideologies distracts from the urgent need to address declining student achievement and mental health. That's on your handout. Ask clarifying questions that are open-ended. How or what, not yes or no type question. So there's a whole list of them on your handout. And you've seen a lot of examples of that so far. And then identify what's right. This is Stephen Covey. Identify what's right, not just what's wrong with their concerns. Like, you know, I, like I, it's a little bit like, I agree that, you know, at some point, you know, we, we, no one wants to ban books. We just have to decide at what age certain books should be viewable by, certain controversial books should be allowed to be seen. So it's, you know, identifying what's right can earn the trust of someone you're trying to persuade. And so the start with why, this is Simon Sinek's concept, when asked to do something, we ask why. And so why is put another's beliefs into words and that establishes common ground. So that's, if you watch the TED Talk he did, start with why. People follow people who believe what you believe. And so he talks about, and this is in the book actually, like Martin Luther King, his why, I don't even have to tell you about what his dream was. You know it, it's so iconic. And it was people-focused, children-focused, society fairness and compassion-framed dream that prompted people to follow him. And within a year of his I have a dream speech, the Civil Rights Act was passed. He never really talked about what. And politicians and school board members often want to talk about what they're for, rather than why they're for what they're for. Again, back to this Tom Sowell concept of if you're going to be for something, explain how that thing helps people and is fair and compassionate. And in a debate, you know, and I had this experience, I did debate prep for, this was a congressional representative, Kathy McMorris Rogers. And, you know, she always wanted to talk about the things, you know, she co-sponsored this bill and the president signed this. And it's like wah wah wah. But when she would talk about why she was for, she, she was being in a debate, challenged on her support for pre-existing conditions. And she came out, never even said what. She said, I take offense at the suggestion that I don't support pre-existing conditions. My child was born with a pre-existing condition. He has Down syndrome and I've worked my entire congressional career to assure that all Americans have access to high-quality, affordable healthcare and right now they don't. And that's not fair. And that's an example of coming out with a why, identifying who you're fighting for, maybe the process of how, but never talking about what. And so how do you compose a why? You basically are saying, I'm for something because. And that second, the, the second space here is the why, the second blank is the why. So I want schools to get back to basics because if achievement losses become permanent, minority students will suffer most. And, you know, I support school policies that inspire a standard of excellence by promoting these things. And then the other way to compose a why is what is at stake if we do or don't do something? So that we've talked about the most precious resource in education is our students' time, which is why we must prioritize academics so they are prepared to flourish in their lives and participate in democracy. So you have this why handout. These are all on that handout. I've mentioned some of them already. And so I won't spend time on this. And then, you know, the other thing to keep in mind is when you're having productive conflict or you're trying to be persuasive, is to begin with the end of, with the end in mind, this is also a Stephen Coveyism. So you want to come across as amenable, not adversarial. So whereas in my case study, I told you my story with Michael, I leaned in and said, can we just find common ground? He was adversarial. I tried to be gracious. He was argumentative. I tried to come across as thoughtful and he was very forceful. It's why I won people over in the end. And, you know, I agree with you. I, you know, do you want to agree to things with positivity? I don't blame you. And so here, this is this concept of how to engage a hostile. You know, when we engage to understand, we can work toward a more perfect union. So that's what I was trying to do in my example in talking to, to, to Michael. But the other thing I want to encourage you is oftentimes we look at people who disagree with us and see them as the enemy. And they, they us, this is what is perpetuating this partisanship in this country that is undermining our ability to find common ground. And, you know, you saw from the polling, there's a lot more common ground out there than you imagine. We just have to bring people to it and earn their trust in order to bring people to it. And so I encourage people to consider Abraham Lincoln's words, if he was able to say in his second inaugural address to an audience of people who still believed in slavery or maybe even owned slavery with malice toward none and charity for all, we should be able to do that too. And then these are the keys to earning that trust, you know, and there's a handout that you have as well. But you want to come across as likable. You don't want to debate. You want to try to validate, I don't blame you for feeling that way. You want to use yes and instead of but. Because when you say something and then say but, it negates everything you just said. So try not to say but. Words matter. You know, we were, this is what Dave and I were talking about before we began, these labels like conservative and liberal, I mentioned that to him and when I wrote a column about the, and this is in the book, the Jefferson County School Board conservative block, that that's the way the Denver Post called them, was being recalled in an election in 2015. I didn't call them conservatives. I called them education reformers. And their opponents were not teachers, they were education establishment. So instead of using labels that mean different things to different people, just say what they are. Okay, so repeat back key points without adding an opinion. That's one way of coming across as validating someone's concerns. Never say you're wrong or insult like Ben Shapiro. Cite sources they'll trust. Don't cite the Heritage Foundation, Project 25, 2025. And then try to use humor. I love this, this comedian is funny making the point about diversity.
CEO of United Airlines, last month, CEO, he announced of all the hiring for all the new pilots that are coming up this year, all the hire of new pilots, the main focus is going to be diversity. Not the best pilots you can find. Using the most hours of experience. No diversity. I don't know about you, but I'm sick and tired of flying all the time with these white pilots landing safely and on time.
So the third power of persuasion about fighting for people, the winning side always fights for people. So Dave did that in the book, fighting, being student-focused in the book. And it's based on A.J. Crable. You know, it's too often school boards keep the doors of buildings open for adults at the cost of closing the doors of opportunity for students, that student focus. Coming up with the messaging that you have in your handouts about why would you ever want children to obsess about their, their race? That's the way to talk about it. Not to fight for what, not to fight for things, but to fight for kids. So, and to do it with the fairness and compassion frame. And we've gone through this moral foundation theory. And then Arthur Brooks makes this point about, I'm not going to play this video right now, but he talks about the big things that we talk about on the right, patriotism, sex and money. But we're losing the battle of moral arithmetic. We are in this 30% zone. While they are in, you know, in, when they use compassion fairness, they're in the 100% zone. So guess who wins? And then the power of story, it helps, you know, I told you my story about my mom telling me, I love you just the way you are, you know, I- You know, I conveyed emotion. I hope I made a connection. I hope it helped me build credibility. Stories matter and, you know, Stalin understood that one death is a tragedy, one million is a statistic. This singular photo went viral in 2015. It's of a Syrian family, a little boy of a Syrian family that escaped the civil war in Syria. This boy washed up dead on a Turkish beach. And it caused this momentary upwelling of support for migrants so that Europe imported them to, to their detriment now. And obviously the stories stimulated a lot of action. Stories move voters. And so that's, I could teach this whole workshop, you know, how to tell a good story. And what are your stories? But just like I told you my story, hopefully you have stories as well. And now the final power of persuasion, the one, if you're on unfriendly ground, get back to friendly ground. Cause as Reagan put it, you're the eighty person, the the person agrees with you eighty percent of the time is your friend, not your twenty percent traitor. So, you know, we do this as, as I've gone through this by saying, I worry, I worry that squandering the most precious resource in, in education, children's attention span is, is hurting them. Asking questions, shouldn't we focus on academics so students are academically prepared to flourish in their lives? Imagine if schools focus more on academics, maybe more students would be performing at grade level. Find what's right with what people are saying, you know, can we agree that we both want to protect kids? We just have different ways of going about it. I did link to this. I'm not going to show it. Pierre Polievre, who's running to be the next prime minister of Canada, elections on Monday, but this is amazing how he takes on a hostile member of the media by coming back with questions.
And you're obviously taking.
And then I, I wrote this column that dealt with critical race theory after October seventh. And I think I linked to it in my preparatory email, but I ended by saying, you know, the upsurge of global antisemitism is powerful justification for the state of Israel and the notion that Jewish lives matter. And if Palestinians had moral leaders who believe their lives matter too, wouldn't that make peace more likely? Assuring every baby matters. The article was titled, how do we ensure all babies matter? Again, with a question, so people own their own answer, which is one of the powers of asking questions. It helps people arrive at your point of view while feeling heard. So people, here's just more questions. Most of these are on your handout. But maybe take a screenshot. And I see we're at seven thirty six. We started at five forty two or so. Or at least I got on at five forty two. So I, I figure I have four or five minutes left if you can hang on. Cause I did want to show, before I close, this is the Supreme Court matter that was discussed by Martha McCallum in her interview of Randy Weingarten, having to do with whether Maryland parents can opt out of the LGBTQ curriculum. And you can see here, it's actually a diverse array of parents who sued the Maryland school district. Muslims, Ukrainian Orthodox Christians, Jews. It's, and then you can see here, people of all races want to restore the opt out. And so here, I want you to just listen to Martha and just try to, I don't have much time to kind of summarize this, and this just happened a couple of weeks, a couple of days ago. But listen to what, how Martha handles Randy and listen how Randy had no choice but to agree with Martha.
Obviously though, that there's a, you know, that there's an appropriate age to have a discussion. These are four to six year olds and they're being read. And this is out loud in the classroom, not just, oh, this is a book on the shelf in the library.
These would not be the books I would be reading as a classroom teacher to kids who are four to six years old. And what we really need to be doing is we need to be making sure that every one of God's children is accepted in our classrooms. And whether that person is an evangelical Christian or whether that person is the daughter or the son of, you know, gay parents, that is our obligation in school. So, you know, it's a failure of all of us that this case is in the Supreme Court right now.
So, you know, it seems to me that the failure for all of us is what has happened to our kids in terms of their education. And I think what disturbs a lot of parents, religious background or non-religious background, is that they see the numbers and saying, why are you reading this book to my child? When, first of all, I want to deal with this kind of discussion at home, based on my own understanding of where my child might be. And B, the numbers are plummeting. Look at this. I mean, this, if this isn't a failure, that needs to be so much more important than whether or not you're reading a book about your pronouns. This is the Maryland rankings, fourth graders, these same little kids who have these books, you know, fed to them at a very young age. They're reading ranked in 2013, they were second in the nation in Maryland. Twenty twenty four, twentieth, math, sixteenth in the nation, plummeting down to thirty ninth. So if, if I were a parent in this district, I would be saying, please, please leave these books out of the picture. Teach my child to read and to do math.
So let's look at what happens in Massachusetts that really works and what happens in Florida that doesn't work. What happens in Massachusetts that works is that there is far more funding and there is a real culture of a safe and welcoming school.
We know that money does not equate a better outcome because in Newark, New Jersey, you have a per student, per capita expenditure that is one of the highest in the country. And you have very, very difficult.
Sweetheart, sweetheart, listen to me.
Please don't call my sweetheart.
Does, I'm sorry. My, my bad.
The fact that our students over the past twenty years have had very difficult, very weakened outcome. I was talking to a teacher the other day. She said, I can't hold a kid back who can't read in third grade. I am forced to push them through the system.
I think parents need to have rights. I think it was a failure of, of what happened in.
One of the problems is it's such a distraction from what we should be focusing on.
I mean, so let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Because if you have a kid in your class who's gay, you have to figure out a way to create a welcoming and safe environment. What teachers have to do is we have to embrace everything, everything that society throws at us, we have to deal with.
I would say this, if, if you have a child in the classroom who's, who's gay, you have a child in a classroom who maybe doesn't speak the language very clearly. You have all kinds of struggles that have honestly existed since the beginning of time. I think you want to have a principal in a classroom that says, we always respect each other. We don't call each other names. You know, we, we respect each other. And then beyond that, those are behavior issues, right? And you have to deal with behavior issues. But you don't want to indoctrinate children. You don't want a child to hear a book read to the whole classroom and go home and say, why am I being taught that I was born a girl, but that was just a guess? I mean, that is going to freak out some children. They are not, they're going to be very confused at four, five and six years old. And I know you said that you don't agree with reading this in the classroom, but I'm saying this is the problem. Then you got to, then that same kid can't read and is pushed all the way to eighth grade and they still can't read.
So, so Martha, I suspect that you and I agree on more that we don't. I know you don't believe me. Have to actually spend time as a school teacher or school principal with parents before you end up talking about issues that some people will think is controversial. Ninety percent of teachers' times in classrooms are about how we engage kids to actually be their full selves. How we make sure that kids actually.
I'm less concerned with them being their full self than I am with them being able to read and write and do math. And that is the biggest problem that we face in our schools today. And if I talk to one more teacher who tells me that they are not allowed to hold a child back who cannot read until he gets to the level where you can. So let's just, I mean, let's.
I agree with you. I agree with you. So, you know, again, that was Fox News and Randy Weingarten knew who our audience was there. But boy, oh, boy, I've been quoting Randy Weingarten for several years now, showing, and she has done like an about face because she's read the room. And she, if you saw, didn't catch it, she's agreeing that these controversial books shouldn't be used in the classroom. She's agreeing, parents do need to be involved in their kids' schools. That you want to, you know, respect each other, you know, practice. That was Martha McCallum's way of saying, let's just practice the golden rule. Cause that's something that resonates. It's a fairness argument and she agreed with that. You need to spend time with parents before you introduce things to their kids. She said that herself. Excuse me. And then at the end, Martha says, well, okay, you want people to, you know, how, how, how people identify isn't as important as you want them to read, write and do math and hold them accountable, hold teachers accountable for that. I agree with you. I agree with you at the end. So I just want to encourage you that some of these arguments are getting through. We are changing minds, changing the culture. And as I close, I just, as I close, I just want to mention, I think it's a little less dangerous than it was before. I hope because of this last election. But I, I had an opportunity to work in Germany and I went down to the, to see the museum at Dachau. And I got well acquainted with the pastor Dietrich Bonhoeffer there. If you don't know who he was, he was a pastor who opposed the Nazis and tried to rally Christians to oppose the Nazis. And he was famous for saying that silence in the face of evil is evil. Not to speak is to speak, not to act is to act. And he was arrested in early nineteen forty five and just like days before Adolf Hitler committed suicide, he was executed, Dietrich Bonhoeffer. And he died for what he believed in. And so thankfully we don't need to do that. And one of the things I'm trying to encourage you and others to understand is that it's that when, that when we speak up, if we do it the right way, we aren't jeopardizing as much. That that we can't be easily deplatformed because we're hitting that sweet spot. We're finding common ground. We're coming across as thoughtful and, and likable. And, and that, that, that is hopefully what you've learned how to do in this workshop. And that if you can go out and use what you've learned, that you will create, as I put it in, in the book, at the end of my chapter, my book, the book here, that we will create these ever widening ripples of good ideas that will help propel ever growing numbers of students to their fullest potential. And isn't that after all, the purpose of schools? And so, and, and to the extent that you do this well, that other people see you doing it well. And if they're not prepared to speak up themselves, at a minimum, maybe they'll just nod their head affirmatively. But the next time, having seen you role model for them how to do it, they will try the next time. And this is how we continue creating these positive ripples in society. So I just, I'm going to close now by saying that I hope that I have persuaded you that we inhabit the moral high ground. The truth is on our side. Public opinion is on our side. And so can be voters and people who are involved in the education world be on our side if we make our case persuasively and we project ourselves in a likeable way. And, and so the truth is that, you know, we as Americans know we are the luckiest people to have ever walked this planet. And the question that so many of us have who are concerned about the education system is will our kids and their great, great grandkids be the luckiest people to have ever walked this planet? It's up to us and the education system that we give kids this opportunity to inherit what we inherited. And so I want to close, as I always close all of my workshops with the prayer. Help us remember the rich American past we have inherited and keep us ever mindful of the bright American future we must secure and enrich. And may the memories of cherished leaders which guide our actions inspire us all to live lives worthy of remembrance. And with that, I thank you for your participation and hanging on a little longer than two hours. And I normally would be available to answer questions if you have any, but I, I know we've gone beyond. So Tracy, I'll leave it up to you. If you want to end the recording and the workshop, you, you tell me.
Well, is there any burning questions? You know, maybe one question if anybody has it. Okay, hearing none. We're just going to go ahead and close. Thank you so much, Melanie, for your presentation this evening. For everyone else, next week, we will reconvene at the same time, same place. You use the same Zoom link that you use to, to log on this time. And you'll hear Dave Traver, the author of Eight Things to Know About Running for School Board and CEO of the Kansas Policy Institute. He will present lessons one and two from the book, Student Outcomes and the Purpose of a Student of a School District. And he will also incorporate some of the six powers of persuasion that Melanie talked about this evening. So we look forward to hearing that and then the following sessions that come after that. Until then, we hope that you all have a great week and look forward to seeing you next week.